There you go.
Good, okay. Okay, so calling to order the Market City Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 7th, 2020. We can start with roll call and I will say your name, so we have some kind of order to it. Starting with myself, Joy Cordillo, I'm here. Aaron Andres.
President.
Eric Brooks.
I'm here.
Commissioner Michael Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Primo.
Here.
Okay. Moving on to the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Can we get a motion to approve the agenda? Dave, is it as good as it is?
Yes, yes.
I had motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Larson seconds. Commissioner Ruiz made the motion. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I just want to point out, because we just did roll call, that Commissioner Coz has joined us.
Thank you.
Um. Moving on to the minutes, we had two sets of minutes. Are there any comments about the minutes? Anybody have anything that they want to add, alter, or speak up about regarding the minutes? Then by consent, we can approve the minutes. And now if anybody has a conflict of interest, this would be the time to let us know. Seeing as how there's no none, we can move on to our first public hearing. Item A, 13 SUP 07 2020, 136 West Washington Street, application for distillery. Andrea?
Staff has reviewed the special land use permit for light manufacturing for distillery to be located at 136 West Washington Street. The planning commission received the staff file review, I'm sorry, the staff report analysis. And attached to it, were attached to this report was the special land use application, their narrative response to the special land use application, the site plan review application. Additional lighting materials. Staff comments and their responses to our comments. The area map. The parcel is outlined in blue. The block, oops, sorry. The block map, the parcel is outlined in blue. Then existing photos of the site. And the site plan. In the site plan, they're showing commercial interior modeling and then they're proposing to have a marquee on the outside. With some facade changes to allow for the marquee. And that is it. I did not receive any correspondence.
Uh, okay, thank you. So no correspondence. Do we have the applicant available? Yes.
Travis here.
Hello.
From IDI, how are you?
Hi, great. Are you going to be speaking on behalf of this project?
Yep, and I know.
Hello.
From IDI, how are you?
Hi. Great, are you going to be speaking on behalf of this project?
You could turn off the YouTube audio.
There we go, I just shut it off.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, just if you want to go ahead and state your name and address for the record and then just give us a little background on this.
Sure, Travis Hungerstone, architect with Integrated Designs here in Marquette, 1021 West Barriga Ave. We've been working with Anne White over the course of the last several months. Basically looking at bringing back the, I guess, the historic piece of the Nordic, the old Nordic theater. She really wants to hold true to that and is looking at bringing in the distillery into the, into town here and the space itself. Once we had gotten into, into the building, Gunlock Champion is the it's a design build with them, they're the contractor on board. We had done some initial exploratory demolition inside, I guess I would say with, they had pulled a demo permit with the county to kind of see what exactly we're working with and the, the old the old ceiling in the, from the theater actually was still pretty well intact. So it was pretty interesting as we're getting in through the project, through design and everything. From a site standpoint, it's really fairly simple. Bringing in the new six inch water line, abandoning the old, obviously there is some sidewalk work and street work that would take place due to that, but that is all on the, would be on contractors within their scope of work to take care of that. In general, with the plans, the front, which I guess we'll consider the south, south end of the building of the, obviously the former book world as well, it's probably more recently what it's been is going to be kind of a modest sized tasting room. And then as well as future the upper, the existing second floor as well is going to be opened back up. Which would be kind of additional space for whether it's like more private parties or that type of thing. But assembly use group. Because the account, occupant count with, from the assembly side, the light industrial piece, which with the factory piece for the building code, there's a fire separation between assembly and the, the industry, the distillery portion itself. All the, the main distilling equipment, it really takes up the bulk of the square footage. And then towards the north end of the building, there's basically a three tiered mezzanine. Most deliveries and that type of thing would come out of the north end of the building up at that back alleyway, so. Fairly straightforward, in, in my opinion. But I think the, if there's any questions that you guys have or concerns, definitely let me know.
Great, thank you Travis. Let me see, does anybody have any questions for applicant? Commissioner Ruiz?
I don't know much about the the smell of a distillery. I did notice in the engineering report there that it said that it would be nothing beyond what a bakery, so the odor is on the magnitude of a bakery. I mean, a bakery is something that I can, you know, smell down the block, but it's, it's, it's a pleasant smell. You know, are there any anticipations that the smell could, could not be pleasant? I just don't know.
I don't believe so, it's not been, it had not been brought up as being a concern from them, I know. Having then like with, whether you look with the breweries and stuff like that, I think there's probably some similar similarities with that. As the breweries are, have their operations going on in town as well. But I had, it would be something that I'd have to follow up more myself, but I don't know that that's, it's not been brought up as a concern prior.
Commissioner Larson?
I think the only question that I have is that it was not anticipated that any dumpsters were going to be used on site, because you know, as far as that goes. But I assume that there is a certain amount of waste that is generated. And you know, how, how do you propose that you're going to do, you know, remove waste from, from site?
Correct, the byproduct of the distilling itself is actually basically going to be going to pig farmers. They, they they go for, which basically feed for, for that, once that product has been used. Is what her, what her plan has been with that, to be able to kind of, not just waste all that material, basically. So the actual garbage per se is, is quite limited.
And that will be just bagged up for like city, city trash bags or, or other accommodations will be made to remove whatever trash is generated from site?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and I believe that application has been filled out already as well.
Commissioner Dunn?
Um, I had a quick question about the alleyway that goes back and it's fenced off there on the back. And I'm just wondering if any thought was given to, to opening that and having some stairs and having that be a nice walkway. You know, I guess if you're using it for, for trash cans and things, it may not ever be a nice walkway, but I, I'm just always thinking about connectivity. So I just wondered if anybody had talked about that.
It hadn't been brought up, those, the alleyway on both sides is actually a pretty, I'll call it, unique scenario, that they are shared between the both, between property owners, both property owners on both sides have access to, or they own it, but not with individual rights, I guess I'd say. Another one to the, to the west. I know that they, they have been parking in there as of late, or for the most, I think typically you'd see a vehicle in there. And then the other one on the, the east side is normally vacant, but there's I think just from an ownership standpoint, I don't know, I think it kind of brings another layout, layer of getting in bringing in cooperation from that adjacent property owner as well, being a situation like that. And it's not, it does not happen half, it's, they both own the full alleyway.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Anguista? Okay, um, you can just hang out and go on mute and Travis, if we have any questions, we'll, we'll let you know, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, Andrea, do we have any public testimony on this?
No.
No, okay. Um, all right, then moving on, do we want to have discussion about this? Somebody want to make a motion?
I had a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn seconds. Commissioner Ruiz made the motion. All in favor of suspending the rules for discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries, Commissioner Ruiz?
I know, I I understand that these businesses think that they're not going to be, be contributing a lot of waste and I do see how the, most of the distilleries by product would be going to this, this pig farmers, but there's still other waste that is going to be you know, I mean, businesses just create waste and I just, I continue to have a concern like the application that we had for the auto value couple of weeks back that we're leaving it up to these businesses to take care of the waste on their own terms and I think that there needs to be some uniform requirement that there'd be, at least be a, a, a plan in place. I mean, you can get small dumpsters, you don't need a huge dumpster, but to think that you know, there's not some sort of area that needs to be designated, I think is lack of over, is in need of oversight, put it that way.
Um, maybe we can ask Andrea or Dave just to weigh in, like if, if it is sort of an after the fact thing, what would be the sort of process if, if say sanitation or you know, the community basically feels like this is rising to the level of nuisance, would they have any recourse to sort of require?
Yes, people can complain about a special land use and request that a hearing be brought up to discuss the problem with it. We've, we've done that before, only once since I've been here in about 10 years. But it can be done.
But what about if it's just, I mean, does sanitation have the ability to just say, look, this is way more garbage than than we feel is appropriate and can, can they compel them to get a dumpster or is it, does it have to be?
I'm not sure about that. That'd be something we'd have to look into, I've never heard of anything like that happening.
Okay. Commissioner Dunn, sorry.
Well, the, the application says that they're going to use the, the carts, the green carts that everybody's using. And I don't know, I mean, I guess i- if, anytime I've had more, more trash than what'll fit in that green cart, I've, I've got to take it to the dump and pay to take it to the dump or figure out something else, so. You know, I don't know, I guess I don't, I don't know how much waste is generated at a distillery, but I'm, at the same time, I guess I'm not worried about it at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of similarly concur, I'd like to err on the side of, you know, if their, if their goal is to not generate a lot of waste to sort of hope that they can make that possible. And just hope that we have a means or mechanism to, if, if it does become a problem, to, to correct it. Commissioner Brooks? You're still on mute. Commissioner Brooks, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. I've known that a lot of the breweries and I've heard of distilleries, the leftover mash that they have a lot of times to give to farmers to feed the pig. And or, I don't know if they use it for fill or whatnot, but I know it goes a lot for pig feed, so I'm sure it'd be recycled that way, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, I believe that is what they are doing with the, with the, is it called the mash? So yeah, so it would really be, you know, try, it would be more like generic trash, I mean, they're not having food, correct? This is just beverage. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right. So it would be just sort of general trash, whether it's napkins, cups, you know, stationary boxes potentially, which hopefully would get recycled. I'm just trying to think of, of what would really become a nuisance. Travis?
I would say too, I think, I don't think they would go into it thinking that they're going to be short, having a shortfall or an issue with having too much garbage, I think, I think they're comfortable with. Going the the route of the city carts, basically. I don't think that it would do them any good to have an overabundance of trash and like Commissioner Dunn had mentioned, if there is a, in a, in an instance where they had a week where there was more than they, they're responsible to get rid of it. I don't see it being something that they're going to be overflowing out on the street because of a scenario where they're, they have too much garbage one week, they're going to get rid of it. It's not going to be something that, I, I wouldn't see it as a concern. I think the the benefit of them going that route also as opposed to going the dumpster route, with the dumpsters, you have to create the enclosures, but it's not like the enclosures are all that aesthetically pleasing either, so.
Got it, okay. Andres, oh, so let me just let Aaron go and then.
This probably doesn't apply, but, um, I wouldn't bring it up anyway, just because, but what about, um, there's probably not going to be that much room for accessibility and stuff like that, but have there any, been any thought to having a ramp or something for, you know, a disabled person that can't climb up the steps or getting into the building, you're as trouble stepping up into the building?
The, the entire main floor is, is accessible. There are with the original theater, there were different ramp scenarios, but that is one, one thing that we've strayed from, from the original design is bringing everything down to that sidewalk level to create accessibility for that level. The, the second floor on the south end of the building is, from a size standpoint, it would be to try and get it, bringing an elevator into that wasn't feasible, but every, anything that's up there is actually just a duplicate space of what's on that lower level.
Excellent, thanks.
Uh, Dave, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to say, I looked up the garbage collection information that our Public Works Department provides on the website. And it says for the properties served, they serve residential properties. And that's through the payment of your utility bill. So it's basically saying, commercial properties are responsible for providing their own, own solid waste services. And that can include that waste management, but it can also be just taking their trash to the transfer station on West Barriga Street and paying by weight.
So they're responsible for their own trash, the trash?
I think they, yeah, I, I'm not sure how they pay for it, because it's obviously not included in the like the residential payment is made through the utility bill, so commercial properties evidently have a different arrangement for payment, but I know a lot of them do get served by the same waste management, picks up green bags and carts, I think. I think they're able to do the same thing residences are, but they don't pay for it the same way.
Commissioner Dunn?
Getting off the trash a little bit, I, I did have one other comment and as I, I do agree with Commissioner Ruiz and, and kind of second his concerns about the, the odors. I don't, I don't know enough about it to know if it's an issue or not, but it, it, it does concern me a little bit. And I'm wondering if there's some sort of condition that, that we can come up with to, to address that, or maybe it's not necessary, I guess with, as long as there's recourse for people to to address it later if needed. Maybe that's okay, I just, I guess I just wanted to put it out there that I do share that concern.
Commissioner Larson?
You know, I think, I think to that, I mean, we do have, we do have, you know, breweries, you know, Ordo Brewing Company and whatnot, that you know, you, you can't smell the brewing process, uh, process down, downtown. One of the windows just writes, same thing with coffee roasters, so I mean, we do have those and we have, we have permitted, you know, orders along those lines, you know, to come, come through. So I don't know if, I, I don't know how different, you know, that this, you know, the, the grain, you know, this, this process is compared to like a, the, kind of that yeasty, yeasty smell from like the, the Ordo and whatnot.
Yeah, it's just an unknown, isn't it? I, I mean, I don't, I have no idea what it smells like either and I think, obviously it's subjective, because if people don't mind the smell, then it's fine. But obviously, having dealt with all of the marijuana permits, we know that not all smells are created equal. So it is a bit, I have a question mark. Dave, sorry?
Yeah, according to the internet, there's not a lot, a terrible lot of distillery smell nuisance problems. It said, you know, it's going to be a smell that most people probably don't mind and it won't be constant, but there'll be some smell, but it's not like an overwhelming smell. That's why I'm reading through forums about this and I'm not seeing anything saying, yeah, they really stink. It's basically saying, there's going to be some smell, but it's generally, if everything's managed well, it's not going to be a smell that's really a problem for most people.
So it sounds like our options are to not add any conditions with the knowledge that if it really is a big issue, people can basically file a complaint, which then triggers the special land use to be revisited and potentially have conditions put on it.
Right.
Versus adding a condition at the beginning, which I don't know, what would that say, you know, should there be, you know, smell? I guess I'm leaning towards not adding a condition, just for simplicity sake, but I'm curious what everybody else thinks.
Is there state regulation of distilleries? That might look at that?
I think her distilling license, I believe, is, is federal. I don't know if there's anything from a, like odor control or anything like that, it, she hasn't brought it up at all. So I'm not certain from that side of things.
I was just thinking that most of these things are somewhat controlled under the light licensing and regulatory affairs office licenses and that kind of thing, you'd think, like with the marijuana, they recommended, I think, some things for odor, they might do the same or require them with distilleries or breweries, but I don't know for sure.
Commissioner Andres, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, let's not overcomplicate it, if it's a problem, then it can be addressed at that time.
Okay, what does everybody else? Commissioner Dunn, you agree? Okay, is there anybody that feels strongly about adding a condition, or should we just keep it as it is? Okay, it doesn't look like it. Are there any other issues that you guys want to bring up? Or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Great.
So after a review of site plan dated June 9th, 2020, and the staff report analysis for 13 SUP 07 20, the planning commission finds that the request meets the intent and requirements of the Land Development Code, sections 54.627 and 54.1402, and hereby approves 13 SUP 07 20 with the following, with the condition that an amended plan is submitted to meet staff comments.
Great, can we get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Andres, seconds? And then I'll go through with a roll call vote right now. Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coz?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well, so the motion carries. Thank you Travis.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, all right, moving on, do we have any citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items?
I don't believe so, I think it's just applicants.
Okay. We have no old business, so moving on to new business, item A, 18-SPR-07 2020, site plan review for the Beacon House. Andrea?
Staff has reviewed the proposed site plan for the construction of a two-story with a basement, 20 rental unit hospitality hotel, parking lot, grading and site improvements to be located at 200 South 7th Street and has provided comments regarding the plan. Those comments were attached to the staff, uh, staff report analysis. Which is shown on the screen here. One thing to note, that right now you're doing a final site plan review of a PUD and the city commission has not finalized a contract with Beacon House. And we have never completed a preliminary site plan to truly compare to verify the above requirements. and we have never completed a preliminary site plan to truly compare to verify the above requirements uh that the planning mission should review for a final site plan. That is an excerpt of the code language there. You got your the applicant's site plan review application with attachments. Staff comments. The area map, the parcels outlined in blue. The block map, the parcels outlined in blue. Existing photos of the site. And then the site plan. Uh, again, no correspondence was received for this.
Um, okay, do we have the applicant available?
I I've got a quick, quick question for staff, quick question for staff. So just about the the final site plan review of PUD as it's stated in the Land Development Code, saying that we have not looked at the preliminary plots of this, does that actually? Is that a step that needs technically technically to happen before approving this? If it if it states in the code that we're supposed to, you know, to to look at those those particular things to approve the PUD before going into the I'm I'm just wondering if they, you know, procedurally, if that is technically a requirement to to review prior to this.
Okay.
So I I'll try to explain this, so uh what's going on here um pretty simply. This is procedurally not ideal, the way this is has unfolded. But what happened was the original PUD is the PUD for the hospital campus. This part of that campus was approved as an amendment to the last site plan submitted for the hospital. So the the hospital had, I don't know, three or four different amendments since it was originally approved in 2015. This was as approved as a minor amendment to allow the Beacon House to be built in this location instead of what was originally proposed as a medical office building. And in the time since that amendment was approved, which was a bit over a year ago, uh, we requested that the agreement be drawn up, and apparently there was a lot of miscommunication on what that meant. And I was told by my department head that our city attorney's office was working on it, only to find out that just a month or two ago that they weren't working on it, and it hadn't been done yet. But since then, they've started working on it, so they have to provide this new PUD agreement that outlines the legal description of the new parcel, because this is now owned by a different entity, has different land boundaries. Um, and that is, in my view, necessary before the city commission can approve this. And it's it's ultimately up to the city commission to approve an agreement for the PUD. So basically, all you guys can do at this point is approve this with the condition that the agreement for the PUD is finalized and approved by the city commission. Because you're really comparing this to the hospital PUD, and there's nothing really to compare, because now it's, this is a different piece of land. This is a piece of land that's been carved out of the hospital PUD. So the hospital PUD has been truncated, and you're not comparing it to that anymore. So this is where procedurally, it would have been ideal to have that agreement done by now, and you'd say, well, this is what we're looking at. This is the legal description of this land. Um, this is what's intended for it. Well, actually, so we're just kind of jumping ahead to what is actually now on paper being planned for development instead of what would have probably been recorded as the intent of the PUD initially.
So should so that so if we agree on this kind of with that, so essentially what I what I I guess what I'm asking is that should we be waiting for that to actually happen for for that for that agreement to actually come into come into existence for this for our kind of our decision to be, you know, essentially in compliance with our own land development code, if that makes sense? And it has nothing to do with the project that, you know, I I think the project's going to be perfectly fine. But from a technical standpoint, you know, should you know, should we be more in compliance with our land development code than 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 we are if we're moving forward with this piece right now? And essentially pushing this this off until that that decision is actually in place or that agreement is in place, so that, you know, we are essentially in compliance with, you know, how our land development code states we ought to be operating.
Well, believe me, those concerns, I had those same concerns, and I raised those concerns with my department head and with the city attorney, and they're aware of how we're proceeding right now. And our attorney's office is has basically given us the green light to go ahead with this um review, and as I described, with being able to, at this point, you're making a recommendation to the city commission. So if they want to, you know, they could choose to not uh accept your recommendation and deny it and go back, push it back to the planning commission when the agreement gets done, but I think they're on board with the fact that the agreement is being drawn up, and they will vote on both as a package when when they get it. But our attorney's office is aware that we're conducting this hearing without that agreement, and they are okay with it under those terms.
Commissioner Andres?
Um, this is a um from a, I I get that this attorney's okay with it and that the city commission is well aware of giving us the green light, but as a matter of principle, I don't think this should be done.
Commission, okay, thanks, Eric. Uh, Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, I guess I'm a little bit concerned for a similar but slightly different reason, and that is that I'm I'm wondering if if this portion of the PUD is approved, i- is that going to then hurt the city's negotiating position, because they're going to be in a pickle where, you know, portions already been approved, planning commissions, you know, conferred some rights to the property owner that they can do this, and now is that going to tie the city commission's hands to some degree? Um, I don't know, it's it's it it seems tricky.
Mr. Chair, I can't answer that question specifically. It um, there's just too many unknowns there, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of the city commission. But like I said, if they don't like the what's what's being presented as a recommendation, they can deny it. And I don't think they they always have the option to say this wasn't properly administered or whatever, this process didn't follow proper procedures, but when the city attorney gives us a green light to do something, generally, we, you know, I can't say, well, no, we're not going to do it, because ultimately, they're responsible for legal decisions that the city makes. And this kind of falls into that area of their their they've taken responsibility for this action for allowing us to have this hearing.
Commissioner Ruiz?
I mean, and part of my thoughts too is, I mean, the Beacon House has been fundraising for this thing for, I mean, for some time now, yeah, and I I think we're all well aware that they were planning to put the Beacon House on this on this site, so um, you know, it's 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 not a surprise to any anyone, uh, I don't think, and uh even though it might be done a little bit out of out of order, it sounds like it wasn't on the Beacon House, uh, you know, on their end, it looks like it was some some miscommunication, and um I I I don't think it's putting the cart before the horse in this in this matter is is gonna be detrimental or or missing some sort of uh fundamental aspect that we need to make this the determination on this. Uh, I would encourage the planning commission to move forward.
Commissioner Andres?
I just want want to it to be on record that I have nothing wrong with the project. I think it's a great project. I think it's wonderful. I just think as a matter of procedure and principle that they should have their ducks in a row before they move forward. Um, for those reasons, I will be voting against it, but it sounds like it's going to pass anyway. So, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
Uh, I was just gonna say that Dave's Dave's comments, you know, put me at at, you know, at at ease that if, you know, the city attorney has recommended that, you know, with that language, that we're just making a recommendation. I just wanted to have clarification, uh, you know, on this subject, since it was it was pointed out, you know, specifically by by Andrea. But I do think that um saying that with on the condition, uh, you know, that this is, you know, approved, you know, by the by the planning or the um the city commission, it makes it makes sense, but I just wanted to make sure that we had some sort of understanding of what what this meant or how uh how this went systematically here, so.
Okay, so I think this is a good, I this is definitely clarified a lot for me. I think we should proceed with the um with the with the application and um, you know, taking this into account. Um, uh, Commissioner Dunn?
One more question for staff on a totally different point. If I could.
Go ahead.
Um, wh- where are we at for the parking now? Uh, so the I saw that there were some comments back and forth, but where, I guess, where where do we stand now? Is it 40, or is that going to be reduced?
For their response, they are going to reduce it.
Okay. And why?
Commissioner Dunn, should we proceed with the application so we can sort of deal with it, because we haven't heard from the applicant yet?
Yep, I'm sorry.
So, because I I don't, I feel like we're moving into sort of discussion about the project. Um, I think, right, we were having this this more sort of existential talk about should we even have it on the table? I I feel comfortable moving forward with it, even if there are some, you know, people who are opposed to it just on the grounds that it's here at all, but um, I I feel comfortable moving forward, so I would like to, where are we even at, Andrea? Did you go through your part? We're ready for the applicant to speak, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so i- if it's okay with you, Commissioner Dunn, um, I'd like to have our applicants give their uh give their feel on this, and then we can ask them questions and hopefully get to bottom of all these sort of more technical questions. So um, I see we have Mary?
Yes.
Um, and then we have, could you give me your full name?
My name is Mary Tavernini Darling.
Okay.
You're of the Beacon House, and I believe um on the line with us is um Brian Savaline, our civil engineer,
as well as Dax, which are from uh RG Design. Welcome. Um, okay, well, whoever would like to speak on behalf of this future state, your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Again, I'm Mary Tavernini Darling. I'm the CEO of the Hospitality House of the Upper Peninsula is our full legal name, and our new address will be 200 South 7th Street in Marquette.
Great. Do you want to just talk a little bit about the project or or?
Absolutely. My prepared remarks are now going right out the window, because um this is the very first I've heard of an agreement with the city that was not fulfilled, that was something that was in progress that um, so again, I'm not sure how we would have been notified about that, uh, who would have been notified. I do apologize if it was anything on our part, but our commitment, and I will go back to my first remarks, uh, prepared remarks, and that was to thank all of you for the work that you do for our beautiful city. Um, I know this is your um, this is your passion too, so I think we're all in the same boat. We just want to see things done well and right, that will be um, the right thing to do for the city going forward, and I think that's how I feel so passionate about Beacon House for over 20 years. We've been um not only impacting the economy with um with jobs and providing access to healthcare, but we've just been making a big difference in the lives of people in a medical crisis, and it's something that now that our old building is sold, um, and we are, you know, our program right now is called Operation Overnight, and we're literally just helping one guest at a time. We can't wait to get back to having a beautiful beacon house where we can do, not just provide that safe, affordable housing, but also, you know, be there for people, just in the all the very soft and comforting ways that is what is the other part of Beacon House. So whatever we can do, know that we will do everything in our power to um as quickly and efficiently get you through our architects, engineers, civil engineers, whomever that is, um, will get you whatever you need, because we just want to move forward. So I'm hoping that um the incredible job that um RG Design has done, uh, and with their team, with the plans it provided you with, I hope that um, you do find those in compliance. Um, so I just want to thank you on behalf of Steve Mariucci and our Board of Directors so for considering this. Um, Steve very much wanted to be on the call with us, but unfortunately conflicted with a special program he's doing with the NFL Channel tonight. Um, again, he asked me to please just convey um his thanks and to let you know how proud he is to be affiliated with our project and this gorgeous city that we belong to, so thank you. Um, I believe Brian Savaline was going to be able to address the parking situation and any other questions that you have from the engineering side of things, the civil side. Um, but also Dax, if there were any architectural questions, uh, he's available to, and I'll answer anything that you like, and try not to be crazy Italian and go on too long, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Savo, was there anything you wanted to add, or or Mr. Richard?
Um, no, I'm here to answer questions. Uh, yeah, we have been working on it for a long time. Um, I I wasn't aware of the of the problem with the city. Um, a little history, I know that the Beacon House does own the property now. Um, so maybe that's part of the complication, but I I don't know if you know, Brian, um, what the hiccup is, um.
It's.
I'm not fully aware of what the issue is.
Yeah, it's uh. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, a- actually, tonight's the first time I've been made aware of this as well. I know uh the attorneys between uh Beacon House and DLP um have been in a lot of work to try and work this out. I know there was a lot of discussions with the city uh in terms of how this was going to work as a as a taxable entity and and a lot of things that are way beyond my civil engineering mind. So, you know, with that, I'm I'm here to address the the site plan. Um, and I just wanted to clarify a few things here before you got into discussion, to hopefully, you know, cut down on some of the back and forth and uh and I want to thank the city staff, and and I just found out today, uh, Keith Winnington's retiring, congratulations to him, he was a really uh really good, I saw it on LinkedIn like hour before this meeting, so.
I didn't know that, wow.
But him and his staff have always done a a good job, and Andrea's been really good at getting back and forth with us here. Um, the the one question already came up regarding the parking. Uh, when you look at the site plan, you you're probably wondering why the parking lot's in a L shape. The the original plan of this was to do an L-shaped building, and there still is plans in the future that that now would have to be addressed, I I would assume through a separate site plan review, if and when that addition can actually happen. You know, there there's a lot of fundraising that would need to go forward to that, so. So the initial uh parking plan is set up for for more rooms there, so the uh um, we can, we can easily reduce our parking to meet the city requirements by eliminating our our western row um of the the parking lot that's furthest away from the Beacon House. Um, one thing here, and we had talked about this before, we we thought we'd have more of an issue with lacking parking when everything is built out more and have to deal with it then. But typically and technically, these people are all clients of the hospital already. Uh, they're just staying closer, so overflow parking. Uh, they're just staying closer, so overflow parking if needed, you know, could be handled over there. But we also were aware that DLP had some issues with not enough parking, so. So that is not a problem uh, in terms of uh, reducing that parking to meet the, the city requirements. And we're just waiting for this meeting to decide whether or not we need to do that or, or if we can move forward with that amount. The, the other thing, uh, the engineering department has some questions about storm drainage, which has been revised a, a few different times that at one time, I actually did have to have a, a what's called a backflow preventer from our system into uh, what is the DLP's uh, stormwater system. But we ended up needing an additional two-foot of basement headroom, which allowed us to, to raise the grade. And, and in our calculations, we were able to handle a hundred-year storm within the, the existing uh, hospitals uh, basin. Uh, one thing we're also doing with that basin though is we're, we're increasing the capacity of it. And the issue that the city had brought up was that the uh, the overflow elevation of that is just slightly below what would overflow out of our catch basins, um, but our hundred-year storm does not exceed the overflow. So we, we technically meet the standards. Um, however, we're willing to discuss uh, potentially raising the catch basins a little bit or, or putting that backflow preventer if it is, you know, an immediate need. But, but I've seen a few issues maintenance-wise with these at times and they can actually cause more problems than, than, than they can help. And there's no issue with backflow into, into our system that, that would create any problems for our site. So I, I, we're asking there is the ability just to talk with them before we finalize it. And we're gonna follow whatever they're gonna require, just like, you know, with the other, the other issues. There were a lot of, you know, clarity on the, on some of the architectural site, the civil site plans that, that will clean up. And, and we have no, no issues with the comments that were developed by either engineering and or planning. There's a couple extra plantings I think we'll need to do. Um, I think our calculation was a little shorter than what Andrea had come up with. And, and we'll have no problem with meeting those, those items.
Okay.
Well, I'll leave it at this, otherwise I'll talk all night.
Thank you. Um, okay, do we have any questions for our applicants at this point? Anyone? I, I have a question. It's sort of not, it's not totally related. I'm just curious about sort of the sort of, the space between the hospital like, and the Beacon House. Is there gonna be any connectivity or like landscaping connecting them? Or are they right now sort of discreet? I, I mean, they are discreet right now. I'm just curious sort of what the potential for that space in between the two sites.
Um, there's, it's actually the, the helicopter pad is to the west. And, and the storm drainage basin makes it kind of difficult to have direct connectivity across. Uh, that way, there is already existing um, landscaping that the hospital had put in. That separates uh, the basin from, from our site. And in terms of accessibility, we have a, we have a sidewalk that connects our parking lot along the west side of the driveway. That, that comes down where people can access the uh, the walkway to uh, to the hospital as well. So hopes at least in warmer weather that, you know, there's walkability that's interconnected with them, that's planned for. The, the other thing, the, the reason the driveway is where it is, is we were not, you know, we're not permitted to access on Seventh Street. For good reason, because of the uh, the pedestrian bridge and, and things in our near area. And the other reason we, we come up the street so far is that the uh, city actually owns the lot. Um, on the corner right there, and at one time, I own that steel is, the plan was potentially for a, a firehouse or something there. And we've, we've designed the driveway in a way that, and created easements so that should the city wanna use that same access to enlarge their site a little bit and, and help with circulation. They could easily uh, put a drive onto our driveway as well, you know, without, without any issue from us.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions for our applicants? Doesn't look like it, so you guys can go on mute and if we have any questions, we will uh, let you know. Um, okay, so did we have any public test, we didn't have any public testimony, right Andrea? Okay, so do we wanna have discussion about this? Somebody wanna suspend the rules? Or does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
After review, uh, I would motion that after review of the site plan, the supplemental documentation dated May twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty. And the staff report slash analysis for eighteen dash SPR dash zero seven dash two zero. The planning commission finds substantial compliance with the City of Marquette Land Development Code and hereby approves the site plan with the following conditions. Uh, one, uh, that an amended plan is submitted to meet staff comments. Two, a revised PUD agreement is submitted to reflect the proposed amendments to the most recently approved PUD amendment.
Second.
Oh, okay, so uh, Commissioner Larson seconds. So uh, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote on this. Commissioner Andres?
Nay.
Commissioner Coz?
Yes.
You said yes?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Alright, thank you guys. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Um, okay Andrea, we don't have anybody who wants to wish, uh, address the commission on non-agenda items, do we?
Uh, nope.
Nope, okay. Uh, planning and zoning? Okay, very exciting. Dave, was there any comments about that you wanted to point out?
No, just if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. And. Uh, we don't have any work sessions. Uh, so let's go into commission and staff comments. So uh, alright, let's, let's go through. Uh, Commissioner Primo, do you have any staff or comment, uh, staff comments? You're not staff comments, you have any commission comments? Wade?
No.
No, okay. Uh, Commissioner Ruiz?
No.
Commissioner Coz?
No.
Commissioner Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, sorry.
Alright.
Um. I, is the hospital still, does anybody know if the hospital's still having uh, parking issues with, with their parking lot being overcrowded? Because I'm, I'm still curious, I, I didn't, I, I wasn't gonna vote no, but we didn't have a chance to talk about the parking on that. But I'm just wondering if it makes sense to reduce the parking if the hospital's needing some overflow. It, it could work out really well, um, if, if the hospital needs those extra spaces. I, I, and I'm not a fan of sur- surface parking either, but it's just, it's one of those situations where it seems like it might be needed.
Yeah, I don't know. Uh, Dave or Andrea, do you guys have any info on, on that? I, I don't have any.
I can tell you anecdotally, cause I live within a three-minute walk of the hospital and I bike by it quite a bit. And drive by it quite a bit. And I rarely see the area in front around. The ER always has an abundance of open parking spaces on that side of the hospital.
Okay.
Um, and there seems like there's always some open parking in that other lot where he's talking about where the entrance road is. There's a little parking strip to the east of that. Um, so I, and I, I don't see the other lot full all the time. I mean, it just doesn't seem like there's a parking problem there.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Larson?
Yes, uh, I guess my, my comment, I, I guess it's a question and I, I could email it around as well to, to Dave anyway. Uh, it's just regarding, you know, the email you sent out last, last week, just, you know, kind of informing us about, you know, the previous tower decision, uh, or the, the previous tower decision that, that we made. And that, uh, you know, it will be going to court. Um, does that? Depending on the outcome of that, does that, will that determine us having to go back and kind of revamp some of the land development code portions? That seemed to, at least to the majority of us, uh, at the time, seemed to give us some leeway in making those decisions, if that makes sense. And so if our land development code was kind of set up in that, in that manner, that seems as though we have some leeway in it. But it turns out that we actually don't. Does that, uh, does that mean that we'll have to go back and kind of revisit, you know, kind of those, those sections? Um, that's part, part A, then part B is that, does the planning commission have any formal? Is it solely on the city or is planning commission, any of us have any formal um, duties, uh, if, you know, in court? Uh, for, for example, I guess that'd be my other question.
I've, I've been thinking uh, about the same things as far as the code goes. And of course, we, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen with the trial or with the hearing. Um, but our attorney said the federal judges are, are very uh, strict as far as their interpretations are pretty much what's in the federal statutes that have been adopted. If you don't have evidence of harm, they're not likely to um, listen to arguments, especially when you've got a split decision from the planning commission on whether there's harm. They're not likely to uh, support that decision. Um. So yes, we could potentially need to revise our code and, and that's a very frustrating thing. Um. States, uh, and states have given municipalities a lot of uh, power in certain situations. And, and, and most states, there's the home rule, state municipalities can adopt ordinances to protect health, safety and welfare of residents as they see fit, but there's these preemptions that have, you know, like the, this telecom thing is probably the biggest, most pernicious preemption there is. And we're, we're gonna see a lot more of that with uh, the deployment of the next generation of um, cellular technology. So, and then the next part is the, I don't think the planning commission has any role in this. Um, I think it's pretty much strictly gonna be the city repor- city attorney representing the case uh, in court.
I, so I, I, I just wanna clarify, like, when Commissioner Larson's talking about revising it and you're talking about revising it. Are we revising it? I, I mean, for me, I, obviously I read it probably more in detail and in depth than I ever had before. Uh, and there were certainly things about it that I didn't love, and I would like to open up a discussion to change. But are you talking about sort of changing it, Dave, in a way so that we basically have less control over it? Or, or in a way to kind of give us more?
Well, I, I think what would be smart is for us to.
An illusion that we actually have any power over this.
No, I, I think what would be smart is for, if the, if the bar is that you've gotta have evidence, then there should be something in the code. Now, this, this is the first time I've been through this with a, this kind of situation. Um. So I think there should be some mention of that in the code that, that there's this very high bar required for the planning commission to rule against uh, somebody who otherwise meets the code. And that the applicants understand that. If the applicant, if you're applying for this, the, the applicant and the people, you know, that are concerned, the, the neighbors would have that code to, to look at. I mean, we saw that we had a neighbor that would did a very good job of analyzing our code and, and taking sections out of it and writing that into her opposition uh, letter. So. Maybe if they had understood what the bar was, they could have been better prepared and, and done some extra things that would have provided evidence, but I don't know that was possible or not. I, I, this is, uh, I think we're all gonna be learning a lot from this and um. This, this is an area of, of, of law that's really, you know, changing. There, there's a lot of advances or new developments happening in this area. It wasn't that long ago that there was a case settled in Michigan that really set the bar for what there's, the complaint is against Marquette. Um. And um, so it's, it's, it's an evolving situation, I guess, that's I can say.
Commissioner Coz?
Is there any chance for her at this point to provide additional evid- evidence? Is she, is she already aware, the neighbor, I mean, of what's going on or is this, you know, beyond that point?
Yeah, this isn't, um, this, this isn't, this complaint doesn't involve the neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
So, no, uh.
No, I'm just, or can the city provide additional information or just is beyond that point at all?
Yeah, it's beyond that point. The, the only thing that, if the court remanded the action back to the planning commission, I guess, perhaps that that something else could be presented, but I, I don't even think that's a possibility. I think there's gonna be a determination coming out of the hearing, uh, and maybe some kind of a compromise that could come out of it. If um, the judge was willing to concede something to the city, like the tower can only be built to forty feet high. And not extended beyond that. That's a possibility and I think our attorney will try to push for any kind of compromise like that if, if, if it's possible.
Commissioner Brooks, did you have a, an additional comment?
No, Dave answered it for me, thank you.
Commissioner Ruiz?
If anyone wants to see the complaint filed by Alto, I can email, just email me and I can email it to you. I've had, I have the complaint and I've read it myself.
Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, I would love a copy of that.
Okay.
And.
I wouldn't mind seeing it either, just for curiosity sake.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, I'll just email it now.
For, for whatever it's worth, the thing that, that I was really hung up on um, is, is the fact that it was designated as a special use. And I think if we were to look at the code, uh, in, in my mind, the fact that it was a special use means that there's going to be some situations where we say no. Um, otherwise it wouldn't be a special use. And I can't think of any other reasons to say no than being right next to residential property. And so that's the, that's the logic that kept going through my head. So I think if we were thinking about uh, revamping the code at all, that, that might be one of the things we look at is it's, if we, if we can't say no anyway, why not just have it be a permitted use in commercial zone?
Well, I, I don't know if we can prevent it in commercial zones, but is there something that we could do? I, I, I mean, I, I think looking at it and, and seeing are there some protections that we could put in, could we put in a caveat that it can't be adjacent to a resi- residential? Um. You know, I, I think, I, I mean, for me, the, the other.
That's where we got into this.
What?
Yeah, that, that's, that's where we got into the, into the situation where there's, there's now a lawsuit is, is that we could. I, I thought that we could say no based on our code, but you know, that's, yeah.
I mean, for me personally, the thing that, that really separated this from other special land uses is the fact that every time we do another special land use, we can confidently say it's, this is what it is. It's not going to become something else unless it comes back before us and we approve it. And I couldn't say that for this, that it felt like once we approved this, it was out of our hands and there was all these other things that could potentially happen. And to me, that's what separated this from other special land uses. And so that was, those kind of components are, in addition to some other things that I think would be useful to look at, you know. And I don't know if we have the power to change those within our code, but I would be very interested in sort of relooking at those.
I have no comments and I'm going to get off.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner Andres. Yeah, I, I don't really have anything in addition to this conversation we've been having as well. Dave, do you want to talk? Maybe, I don't know if you have any comments on the bike paths?
I don't know, did you cover all the commissioners? Eric and anybody else?
Yeah, I think I got through everybody.
Oh, the only, the only thing I wanted to let you guys know is the Department of Public Works has finally been able to free some staff up to start marking our several miles of bike routes that were designated, are going to be designated by signs that connect destinations in the city to the perimeter bike paths. And it would have been great if they had done some of it last summer when we announced that the city was going to start doing that. For whatever reason, they didn't. And then the COVID lockdown kind of slowed everything down this spring. But, so we're kind of a, at least a year behind now on that project to sign and mark several miles of new bike facilities in the city. But it's, it's starting at least, so.
Better late than never.
Yeah, and so over the course of the next couple of months, I'm going to try to put together, start putting together code amendments for the, the near future for introducing some code amendments to. There's lots of possible things we can, we can tackle. I've got at least probably 20 issues documented that need to be addressed. So that's going to probably consume some time. Hopefully you won't have too busy schedules set. And it looks like, well, now, I would say, if we had had our meeting a couple of weeks ago, I would have said, it looks like we'll maybe meeting again in August in person. But I think events of the last week or so, I think are putting things in doubt again about whether we're, we're going to be able to come out of the, these Zoom meetings anytime in the next, anytime this summer. Just, and that's not anything from a city, the city official city viewpoint, that's just my own viewpoint. We'll see, that's a wait and see thing.
Okay.
So lots of homework on the horizon. But I'm glad we all had some time off from this for five or six weeks recently. It was nice, that doesn't usually happen in the middle of summer.
It was nice. Thanks, Dave. Andrea, anything to add? No, thank you. Okay, then I, Sean, did you have anything? I didn't want to forget about you. Great, then I adjourn this meeting and I hope everybody has a wonderful night.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.